I made a motion. The whole meeting was tabled on August 18.
I'll make a motion.
Motion in favor?
Aye.
We stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so this is a continuation of our previous. So those requests for any questions to be submitted ahead of time for research and replies. Paul, Jesse, anything you wish to add to any of the responses that were passed around to the committee members?
No, nothing to add to that, but just a very quick recap. This 2022 executive budget calls for a total tax levy of eight point, just over $8.3 million, up $274,000 from prior year with a tax, with an associated tax rate up one nickel of $5.89 per $1,000 of value. This is the maximum allowable tax levy that the village can collect under state law. This takes into account two unique tax levy adjustments. The standard net new construction value adjustment, which we normally and customarily take, but also a tax levy carried forward adjustment. Because Consumer Price Index came in significantly higher at 3%, the expenditure restraint program cap on expenditures increased as well. Therefore, we are able to utilize these two levy adjustments and program them in as part of our expenditure plan and still maintain compliance with the expenditure restraint program and thus receive state aid payment through the, as a incentive through that program. This is a balanced budget in accord with state law, also budget policy, fund balance compliance per village policy. And at the end of the day, I believe that the executive budget does in fact meet the needs of all of our departments as an organization with consideration to the significant fiscal constraints that we face. That is a very high level overview of the 2022 executive budget.
Okay, thank you. Some emails that went out in that quality. Since again, the request was from the committee of the whole to extend the meeting to ask additional questions. So there's your chance, so whoever started that didn't have their question answered adequately. The email has a chance to talk about the budget for 2022.
I had a number of questions that I actually met with Paul earlier. What was it last week?
On Friday.
I had thought of those verbally with Paul and got answers for most, most of the questions that I'd asked. Mainly just asking for some updates and narrative in the budget as well as a few corrections and questions on some numbers. Probably a majority, certainly over half, that were related to the utility. Got a number of detailed information from Paul that kind of answered a lot of my questions. I think there's, there's one, well, there's, there's a few other comments, but I have one on page. Not understanding on page 261, had to do with diesel plant, waste water plant. Employee had indicated that. Figure by a question. Or. Something of. For the sprinkler system at $21,000. $27,000. That still doesn't make sense to me. I'm not sure what that's all about.
Sure, it was the. He had questioned, requested 2022 for the sprinkler electrical room painting was 21047 and the executive had 16047?
Yeah.
That number should be 21047. I thought it was 16047 and then 5,000 from miscellaneous, but it's like 21047 for that project.
That project, just to measure along the line, said it's. It's related to the electric room painting? Okay? And in your response to my question, you said that the sprinkler system should be 21.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And jetback should be 5,000.
Okay, that's what it is then. I didn't, I didn't print up the email I sent you. I apologize. But. Yep, from the detail that I had received. It was submitted with the original, so it was just a matter of not having them correct.
I, I, I use a speaker please and then I still didn't follow to. The line is for the electric room painting and in his highlights, he indicated. It's on page 261, it's the breakdown of contractual services, probably about. Three quarter way down the page, we have an electric room painting that's budgeted. Followed by a sprinkler. Sprinkler system inspection.
Yeah, I don't.
My understanding is. The painting is not 21,000 or 47, it's 25,000 through the highlights on private page.
Yeah, the highlights are incorrect. I'd, I'd have to go pull, I didn't bring it, but I'd have to go pull the actual supplemental from the department. Forgot about the email to you on Friday.
It's sort of a painting of the electric room.
Yep, I will defer that to somebody else who submitted it. I can't answer why it's 21,000.
Well, I'm not questioning the amount, I'm questioning if you are re identifying it as a sprinkler system.
I'll have to go back and take a look at that. So to pull that detail, I don't have that with me.
Okay.
Who says it? I didn't go 100 for those.
And it could have when I was doing it, I, my eyes shifted to the wrong line.
Yep. I guess the other comment I have about the utility, the utility budget is, I think, identifying in what area where there was a, an actual change in the executive budget from what was submitted by the department heads. And that had to do with. It had to do with some repainting of well six as well as asphalt at, new asphalt at well number four. And that was deleted from the budget.
You also remember all like weeks, yeah.
Correct.
And when we checked back, was one was a title nine.
Correct.
Oh, we pushed back INI construction. Just as such, it's a significant cost rather than doing construction and studying INI here, but in trying to establish a study one year, construction the following years, then another study which may not be acceptable.
The other, the other comment I had is on page 260 and the. Six, ten, six, three, one, zero, two, point, two, one, zero. So that's a contract. Contract, contractual expenses. And we didn't get any itemized in the budget, any itemized breakdown. Now Paul gave that to me. It was one of my questions and that's fine, but in the future, we need to make sure we provide enough breakdown for those services. So that's, it's, it's something that we can understand and don't have to ask the questions. The other thing, general comments I have is that in future budgets, and I think I mentioned this, a public works team as well, that we really would like to get, and when we get our budgets, our grant budgets, prior to sitting down with our committees, we would like to see, I would like to see the priority sheets as well as all of the descriptions of projects and capital expenditures discussed in terms of their justification. Because it, it sure would make it easier for us. We come into the meetings with a lot of questions because we don't have all the information, but it's out there. It just, we just didn't get it in time. So that's just something that we would look forward to with our next budget. One, one additional question I have is relative to the Veterans Memorial Park Shelter and upgrades or improvements that we have been planning for that park since. Went back to some of my notes and we started talking about it at Park and Rec Committee in 2018.
Yep.
And by 2019, we had, we had brought a lot of experts together to work on a spoke of services. We had an architect from Elias Club help us out with that. I know where it went wrong is when we wound up with a, a single bid price at $300,000 and only 50 or 75,000 dollars had been put aside for it. So I understand we're at a point now, given the circumstances, where we need to rethink that as well as maybe refine the spoke to something that is going to be more affordable or at least hope for more affordable prices with more competitive bids. But I hate to see this thing chased all the way into 2023 and I'm hoping that maybe we can, in 2022, maybe better have, get things together again. Let bids, refine the bid, let bids and, and hopefully get some pricing so that we can start construction.
In 2023.
20, no later than early 2020.
That makes a lot of sense and something I've discussed with the Park and Rec Committee is task number one for the incoming park director is going to be that strategic plan and regarding the, the facilities that we have and placing priorities in certain areas. And one of those priorities is clearly that's Park Pavilion. That has been out there, to your point exactly, that has been out there for some time for a myriad of different reasons. And we did receive a, a very significant bid back, well above anything we had budgeted. And that said, that is going to be prior, one of the first priorities along with that strategic plan for the incoming director as project number one. Unfortunately, with the turnover we've experienced and the, the medical leave we experienced, we frankly did not have an individual to turn loose on that project, so to speak. That said, there, there is a significant priority to that and we do want to make that move forward. We potentially could, yep, we potentially could. It could be a revenue replacement project. And I know in, in my thought process, I, I went down that path in, in one of my previous considerations. We have not by any stretch placed that on a list per se, nor has it been approved by either the committee, the whole or village board. But that said, it can be an RPA project as a revenue, under the revenue replacement guidelines.
If I could just ask one final question, this is just food for thought for Brecken and Amber. At Public Works, we, one of the items in the budget has to do with rehabilitation to well number two. And we had. We had a little bit of discussion. There wasn't a lot of feedback from the Board of Public Works, other than my own opinion. Which still hasn't changed. We're looking at a well that probably hasn't been operating in. I don't know how many years, three, five years?
It's been about three from the documentation that I pulled together.
Okay, so it's a, a, a lower pumping well, 300 gallons per minute. It's gonna, we're, we're, we're looking at $80,000, which could even be higher to rehab the well hole and all of the equipment on that. And getting a lot of find without it currently, but. I think that at that time, Larry had justified it in terms of just having a backup for us. But as our water usage continues to go down. I think we need to just kind of look at that again, even in the budget surgery, but. Before we, before we take bids, maybe we, we should just rethink and come back with more justification to do that.
I've actually done some research on that if you want to have a discussion at some point to further, whether where we could go with that.
Okay.
Speaking with municipal well, who services the well, he was a component of keeping it in lieu of, it's, the quota's $55,000, which is significant. To close the well would be about 20,000.
Okay.
To, if with the development going on, this is my concern of closing it. With development going on, if we close it, it is our backup well. And we need water, finding a site, bringing in a drill rig, coming good water without VOCs. As you're familiar, several of our wells have stripping towers. We just told the well gave me a total of $750,000 for a new well. So my only concern is that, do we need that? And again, I don't know the answer to that to, to today. But it's food for thought for us in the future. Closing it concerns me.
Okay, and but, well, not to get into too much detail, but look at our, look at our projections. We've got a lot of master plan that is that show what our water usage, our population is going to be going forward for the next 10, 20 years. We now, we know what our source of supply hopefully is.
Right.
Even with our largest well on the service. And last time I booked, we still have pretty much here, but.
We do, and, and we are getting a, an updated master plan, water master plan. And that's, I have a draft, so that's something to consider.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to get that out. Sorry to waste your time, but let's keep going.
Yeah, I did send questions to Jesse and I think most of them were answered by the notification, Jesse.
Please.
So on the new addition of staff, person being requested for public works. It's mentioned on page 139 and will start in May at 31,000 and then again on April 1 at 50,000. I understand their time is being booked in different categories. I understand that part. But I just want to clarify, so they're gonna come in at 82,000 basically. And in the following year, year, we can expect them to, their salary to be more. Because they're listed at 31,000 and then again 50,000. So are they coming in at 82,000 starting in May?
That could be with full benefits. The, we would budget for the position with full benefits, assuming family coverage, the WRS and the other benefits with that. And yes, that would be the budget figure for that projected start date through the end of the year. So then the pro, the next year, it would be the full year, correct? Yep.
Thank you for the question for the bottom of the scale.
Yes.
And then I think the last question, which was just a clarifying question for me, Chief, is vacation watches. Obviously people are calling the police department to say, I'm on vacation and they're asking you to watch it. This is something new because I saw it was NANA all the other years.
Yeah, that's correct. It's a new program that we're starting out. All right, it's for folks that go on vacation, they can fill out a form on our website and allow us to come by, check on their home while they're gone and we'll, we'll log that as a vacation watch.
Clarifications for the questions.
I just, I'll just start with adding on to Amy's question about the ECU position. And there were the two different pages, page 139, page 141, talks about the amounts that equal 82,196 dollars. And so we're saying that that is just the amount from May forward then? And it would be more than that the next year when it was a full year?
Correct, because we'd only be budgeting for May through December in '22 and then it would be January through December in '23. And again, this is budgeted to allow for social security, WRS, full family health insurance coverage and a work comp insurance allocation as well.
So I asked that same question in my questions, question nine, however, I did not know them, I apologize. And the answer I got for the total cost per year was 60,186 dollars.
It's not for a full year. Oh, I didn't catch the, that's just what's budgeted.
Per year.
Correct. It's, the 6186 is, I went back and looked and that's what was placed in the budget for, starting on May 1st? May 1st date? I didn't catch the year.
So, so if the year, the following year after we kind of prorate this position, what would be the full amount for one year for this position? That's going to be shared between a couple of different areas. If it's not 82,000?
Well, that could be, that could be the full amount. An approximation that would be close. I'm not sure. I don't remember that response from the first. This would be.
I, I, I can't believe more than 82,000 dollars a year would be the cost of one position.
Kind of health insurance is roughly 23,000 a year. That's where the big benefit comes in it.
So what's the, what's the, the, the pay? Like what would the employee be getting?
We programmed in towards the bottom end of the scale, which sounds like 22? 22 something, 2211? Into just over 22, I think it was. Are you looking it up?
Uh, no, I'm getting my calculator out.
All right, $22.11. Times 20, 80.
Are you saying about 22,000 an hour?
Yeah, about $46,000. $22.11 per hour would be about $45,988 or $46,000.
Okay, that's without the benefits.
Correct, that's straight wages.
Okay, so, so again, then the, the amounts that are reflected in those pages, 82,196. You're saying that's the total then with the benefits? Again, it seems high. So I'm trying to really understand that amount, that it would be double what the wages would be. And I guess my point is, I feel like there's nothing, this is not exact for me to look at. It's just roundabout fashions, which is concerning.
For years, health would be about 23.
Back to you on that.
Yeah, 23, another 14% in Medicare, Social Security and the rest. Sure, we, we can calc that out in, in granular detail and, and report that out. Yep.
From May to the end of the year and then for full year. And some of the other things I just wanted to talk about, I know that we, you know, we didn't have an opportunity to talk at our last meeting, so I appreciate that we had this add on. But everybody did not necessarily get all the answers to all the questions. I know I copied the whole boards and they got all the answers. Some of the questions I feel I could get an answer. I was not the only one to note that they liked, I think they said they liked the method of putting a worksheet up on the screen, kind of looking at that and starting with the available tax levy that we had. And kind of just subtracting what people were requesting. What I do understand just is that you said there was really no other specific requests. So there was no need to really work that.
Correct, out of, out of last meeting, correct. And with, with that, we did utilize a moving spreadsheet. I believe not last year, the year before, as there were multiple considerations being discussed and all the way through the public hearing, as I recall. And it really came down to the fact that we needed to have those hard numbers in order to be able to produce something for the budget adoption at the end of November. So that, that said, discussions this evening, should the committee, the whole wish, wish to make any particular changes to the executive budget and their identified destination and source funding, those changes can be absolutely made and reflected in updated budget pages within a day or two.
So, but going forward, I, again, I think that's easier for people to look at something, a plus, a negative, expenditures, revenues, what people want. I think it helped us in the past, those of us who have experienced that in the past. I don't, I don't, I disagree with the fact that it would be difficult to do with Zoom because we do a lot of other meetings with Zoom and commission.
And that's sharing a screen. That, that was different than me just having this, or Paul having a spreadsheet up on the wall, manipulating it. Because we had the camera in the back. It's a completely separate distinct function. So it is a bit difficult and cumbersome to try to do. That said, it can, it can be looked at and accomplished in a different way. I also think that in future years, it, it may be beneficial to look at and discuss priorities in advance of the budget workshop to help with departmental requests, to help with the crafting of the executive budget. Because what comes forward out of the executive budget is a professional opinion. You, you ask department heads to put forward their needs and wants. And then I am tasked with, and Paul is tasked with refining those needs and wants to be within our fiscal constraints. That said, what, what I'm seeing here this year is the needs and wants being identified and that refinement through the course of meeting with committees. But then, then we get to this point and I think there's kind of a mismatch of what, what those needs and wants are or should be identified as. And so I, I see this process changing in future years to have that discussion upfront. So therefore, we get to this executive budget and we, we can get right down to brass tacks, so to speak.
I think when we had the spreadsheet approach, I think we walked out of it. People understood, they understood, you know, how we got to where we got. Everybody had, you know, like you said, a visual input and like, you could put down, what is any worth, what's it cost us? You know, and then, you know, then we talk about where this priority or inspire, right? So I think if you get back to maybe that kind of approach, I think that's all, I think a lot of the concerns that I need.
Sure, absolutely. We, we can figure out a system to do that.
Yeah, and it, it's difficult because I think I'll bet you a lot of people sat down and they still didn't really know the exact amount of money that we were looking at to spend. You know, what is the tax levy amount? How much do we have to spend? How much exactly is going to the different departments that are getting it? And that's, I feel like that's what we got on the sheet. So I think the exact amount that we're looking to spend this year for next year is about $275,000. Is that correct?
I guess if you refer to page 45, within the budget, the 2022 budget facts, that breaks out not only the expense expenditures by program area being general funds, special revenue funds, debt service, so on and so forth, but also notes the program levy into those areas. So, and also net speaks to the overall tax levy of the 8.36 million dollars, which is a 270, almost $275,000 change. And so I believe that's broken out here in, in the document.
How much? I guess that's what I just want, how much money? Because I do, it's confusing to people.
I, I. We have 8.368 million dollars of tax levy to spend. Or to appropriate, or to appropriate, excuse me, or to appropriate across various funds. But we are also programming the use of fund balance in, in several funds. But with regards to total tax levy allocations, that is the 8.36. As far as what is going to be expended within the general fund or programmed to be expended within the general fund, that would be the very top number, that $9,296,114.
Does the rest of the board understand my question about the amount of money?
I don't know this, this is no different than it's been every year.
So in the past, we put it, you know, we put up a sheet and you said, this year we only have this much money to spend. You know, that's kind of what you said.
Well, that's what we had.
Okay, so is, is the amount, Jesse, is, is it 275,000? Is part of that money what we're moving forward? And we're going to utilize some of that for the ECU?
Correct, that 274,959,000 dollar number in that total tax levy gray line, that represents the net new construction adjustment as well. that represents the net new construction adjustment, as well as the levy carried forward adjustment. Uh, that, that is the change in our tax levy. Uh, the CPI is at three percent.
That was three. Uh, yeah, expenditure restraint is thirty-three percent CPI plus sixty percent of your net new construction, which is about one-point-six percent. Net new construction, two-point-three, so roughly, it's almost three-point-four, three-point-five. Is there your P, but that's expenditures, not tax levy, two, two distinct different things.
You could have gone down to a public flat tax, you know, like a zero change in the assessed capture. But that would have been not maximizing the levy, and to do that and to program um, budgets for these various programs that we have, would have been meant higher commitment of fund balance. Um, if you guys have been watching the trends and, and listening and reading the GFAO, I think it's the GFAO reports and stuff like that.
Could you define that, Jim, the GFAO?
Oh, the Government Finance Officers Association.
Okay, I just want everybody to know what that is.
Document that basically shows that we are a trend to continuously rely more heavily on fund balance. Um, and we, we continue to do that at some, some point in the future, the big day runs out. So I did, I did recommend that we max out the levy to put down the impact on use of general fund balance. So when we talk about, you know, thirty-three or, or, I recommended our, our self-import recommendation is point five minimum. Right, that, that's going to, that's coming. I mean, we are, we, last year, we, I don't know, I remember the last year, but this year, I think we're going to be using, what, four-hundred and something?
It's projected to be four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand.
But we're, we're actually, and the year before was what?
We actually had a gain of a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand with twenty.
Over half a million dollars difference in fund balance. And this is, this is a trend that's been identified for the village as an area of concern. So that's why I recommended, at least this year, we max out the available levy so we can. I mean, it wasn't a huge amount of money, it was like sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty, yeah, just over sixty.
We have to, we have to try and fight that negative trend. Um, and so the thirty-three percent, it may be thirty-three percent this year, but at the rate that we're spending, again, half a million dollars difference delta between last year and this year, that's, that, that's going to start chewing away at that thirty-three percent in the bakery. And we're going to make some hard decisions, and at some point, we're just going to have to, you know, we, we may have to go to a referendum and say, you know, we just, it's, it's, you know, expenditure restraint isn't that important for us, or as important for us as getting some of these products done that we need to get done, or funding for staff and stuff like that, but right now, um, seventy-five thousand in, uh, special restraint?
Uh, aid payment?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounded seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand in the strap every year, so at some point, the seventy-five thousand dollars, or the fifty thousand, or the forty thousand won't be nearly as important as doing, getting the product stuff that we need to get done, and we'll have to say, you just have to say what we're going to pull it. And then if we want to exceed levy, that's safe, if we want to exceed levy, then we have to go to a referendum.
Sure, I mean, this year, we still have about three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to reach expenditure restraint. Our issue is, we have no revenue to fill that hole. Only revenue, only thing we can fill that hole with is fund balance, and that's, we're at a point where it's indicating that it's not sustainable.
So, you know.
The general fund.
That's, that's good to know all that information, but I guess what I don't like about that is that we weren't even made aware of any of that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, those distributed to the board, distributed to the board every year.
The rest of the board, like you said, this is something that you recommended. I mean, uh, great, now I know, now I understand, um, but.
Oh, that, oh, yeah, I mean, that, I mean.
Yeah, but I mean, those are things that we would like to know about.
I mean, I, I, I mean, because it comes down to a difference of, of twelve dollars on the average house. And I, I, I think this will lead to the average home owner, twelve dollars, the buck a month. It's not, it's not a huge amount of money as far as in the context of the decision-making process. But I, it is one of those things where, you know, at this point, every, every dollar that we can save in general fund that we do not have to apply towards, or take and put to fund balance to, uh, balance the budget, we really need to do, because that is something that has, that's just a, that's just a negative trend. I don't know that it's really all that germane to the discussion here tonight, but it's just something that I think the board needs to understand. We, the way the state works right now, we really need to max, we really need to maximize the levy as absolutely, as, as a must-do. I don't know that we can survive by saying we're going to have, uh, flat assessed tax rate change on an annual basis. And then a buck a month. I have to also that, that's significant.
Um, Jesse, could, could you point me to what page in the budget actually shows the amount of the expenditure restraint program refund? Is there a line item that gives us that?
That is. Uh, one second, I can find this here. Oh, general government revenues, yeah, I see, okay. So it's part of that number. The expenditure restraint program, uh, page ninety-six. And just making sure I follow the correct line here, should have brought my ruler. It is plugged into that three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollar, uh, line. State shared revenue, um, forty-three-point-four-three-four-zero-zero-zero is the account number. It'd be the third number down in the second group of revenue figures.
And that's really a combination number there, isn't it? It doesn't, it doesn't.
Anything that is.
Separate out the expenditure restraint.
We got a, a shared revenue payment twice a year, and then in that payment, they break out what it's for. So the one in July includes our ERP payment.
Okay, and, and when that, when we apply for those ERP funds, um, who, who come, who completes the application?
I do, finance department.
And, and if, if, and they decide shortly thereafter that we get it or not, because I, I noticed, said, Jesse, I think we got the rebate in July?
Uh, the aid payment is paid out in July and October, for Monday in July, yeah. Uh, it's two different aid payments, the expenditure restraint line item comes with the July payment.
Okay, if we, if we would decide not to take it, um, could we forego it and?
Oh, yes, um, the, the expenditure, I, I'm.
We're talking budgeting in the future?
Yes, um, the expenditure restraint program is completely voluntary.
Right.
Um, and I know last year during the budget workshop and, and budget process in general, we talked about that trend we've been seeing, not all that long ago. The villagers receiving almost a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditure restraint, um, aid payments or incentive payments. Um, that said, that we're already in half, um, we're, we're looking at seventy-five thousand dollar payment next year. Um, but to your point, trustee Harbeck, the ERP, the expenditure restraint program is completely voluntary. And the beauty of it is, is if we get out one year, we can get back in the next year. Um, it's just a matter of resetting the baseline, uh, of expenditures, so to speak.
And by getting out, we can decide that we're going to use more money one year.
Correct, correct.
The only time it makes sense to, you know, look at it is when expenditure restraint is eating us from maxing out the levy. And then you look at the delta and say, is the delta between our expenditure restraint rebate and mass levy that we can spend, is it, is that number greater than the rebate? And if it's greater than the rebate, then say screw expenditure restraint and rest maximize the levy, because we need the levy to do programs, right?
And in, and for twenty-twenty-two, the beauty of it is, is the consumer price index, which factors into the ERP limit, is higher. So even with taking the two levy adjustments and the programmed expenditures, we are still below that ERP cap. So the great part of the higher CPI, the silver lining there is we can have these programmed expenditures at a higher level, still complying with the expenditure restraint program, and still receive that revenue from the state of Wisconsin.
But that all works as well, as long as you have a decent inflation.
Correct.
But if you have zero, um, you had zero inflation, one percent inflation the last three, four years, that's when you get dinged on the fact that, you know, in order to need expenditure restraint, you can't hardly max out the levy.
Correct.
But it's like I, like I said, I mean, it's, it's pension restraint, I mean, we're at seventy-five, we're at a hundred and fifty, two, three years, or if we have forty, it may not even be worth it.
True, true.
Um, Jesse, could you review, I know at Park and Rec the other night, you talked about, um, that you thought that they had about eighty to ninety thousand dollars to spend?
Certainly, so the Park and Open Space Fund on page one eighty-six, um, there is a programmed allocation of tax levy of thirty-five thousand dollars um, for twenty-twenty-two, um, this mirrors, uh, last year's adopted tax levy allocation. Um, with that, because it is a special revenue fund, um, any unused dollars stay in this fund. So at the end of twenty-twenty-one, we are looking at an ending fund balance at the end of this year of about fifty-four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Adding on thirty-five thousand dollars of tax levy on January one, there is now an eighty-nine thousand dollar balance in that account for projects. And twenty-twenty-two's budget calls for forty-four thousand dollars worth of projects. So about, uh, half of what the available funds are within that, uh, particular Park and Open Space Special Revenue Fund. Um, looking through the five-year capital plan, through the park and rec as it sits now today. Again, the plan changes each year as priorities change and are identified, but as it sits now today, that thirty-five thousand dollar ongoing allocation is adequate, but that's today. This is something we will have to revisit as the capital plan changes, as the, um, park infrastructure and amenities change. Um, this is absolutely something we'll need to keep an eye on in the future. But right now, today, this snapshot, that funding is appropriate, and there are plenty of funds in there for the programmed projects, as well as any contingency projects, or, or, um, un- unanticipated projects like, uh, repairs.
So, um, this money in this fund is used to, um, I guess, take care of the, the older parks, right? Upgrades, yeah, upgrades, right? So, um, for next year, we're planning to use forty-four thousand dollars.
Correct.
So then that will decrease the fund balance by forty-four thousand dollars.
Correct, we are looking at a anticipated ending fund balance at the end of twenty-twenty-two. Um, after having those existing funds, adding the thirty-five thousand, taking out the project costs, we are looking at an ending fund balance of about forty-five thousand two hundred and forty dollars under the twenty-twenty-two executive budget.
Right, so they'll have forty-five thousand in the fund balance, and then they'll still have thirty-five thousand in their own regular account, so to speak.
No, that, that is after ev- everything passes through, if we're looking at December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two.
And that's all they'll have is forty-five thousand.
Correct, and then January one of twenty-twenty-three, whatever that tax levy allocation for twenty-twenty-three is adopted at, that would be added to that forty-five thousand dollar figure.
So, um, I think you gave a great presentation to Park and Rec, both times you came to talk about the budget. That was excellent, and I don't think they had ever heard any of that information.
Oh, okay.
I want to thank you for that, I think that opened up their eyes to a lot of how this works. Um, I personally would like to see more money go in. I know it's based on the general property taxes, I don't feel that this is enough money, um, to really help the parks that we have locked. Um, I, I would ask for more money to go into that account, I know that the Park and Rec Committee members thought that initially, and they were a little bit, I think, focused on the fact that you kept saying ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars, that's what they heard.
Correct.
So a couple of them said, great, we've got ninety thousand dollars that we can use.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, but again, after we use some of this money, it won't be ninety thousand dollars. So me personally, I would like to see more money in this account for next year, ten thousand dollars more, that's me. Um, I'm just one person. Um, the other thing that, um, I wanted to say is that I feel that the fire department should get another employee. I know we talked about this in the past, um, they're probably going to show revenue related to cause of more than ninety-three thousand, just with the information we have. We still have another, you know, two months left of the year. Um, I appreciate the fact that, that they will get more help in the office area, and that, that position will be moved up to administrative assistant. And I know at some point, you're going to have to figure out where that sits in that job description, um.
That, that'll be forthcoming to finance committee, um, assuming the budget goes through as, as.
So I, I, uh, I would ask that, um, that position at some point, I guess, when it passes finance committee, that it, that that person be allowed to start through the revenue the year. Um, there is quite a bit of revenue that's coming into the fire department from a number of different sources. That would be my second opinion, that would be my second ask. So, sure, sure, absolutely. Again, what I'm going to say about being asked, I guess personally as a trustee, where the funds are supposed to come from, um, many of the trustees don't really understand where those funds are coming from. And I think to ask us, hey, where should that come from? Uh, it's a little daunting, because many of us don't really know where those funds do come from. I would task. Uh, it is, it's a special revenue fund.
Actually use revenues for funding, uh, for you can use levy, which has already been allocated. And you have revenues, and then you have fund balance. So, um, you know, I, I think that if the fire department feels that they can cover a delta change in start time through additional revenues that have been projected, um, and still, I mean, I, I, I think that's a great idea.
I, I guess I feel that, you know, um, it's the administrator's job and the finance director's job to try to help us through the prac, this process, and let us know where is it possible that this money can, can come from? Are there other areas in the fire department special revenue fund that come from other areas? I don't feel that's necessarily my job, because I'm also trying to look at the whole rest of the village too. And we have about a week to look at this, whereas the budget apparently takes months to come up with, and I, I understand that. So I am frustrated that to be asked, where's that coming from, when most of us probably don't know where that might come from?
Well, I, I mean, we worked through the expenditures of programs last week. Um, I get it that we need more time, that's why we're here, but there's nobody here, you know. Everybody's been, I mean, maybe a few, but I mean, the bulk of us have spent many, many, many budget cycles. And the budget is then presented to.
For us to have, we, we have not.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to speak for myself, I, I do speak for myself, if I do have an issue with the budget, we talk to Paul and Jesse regarding the funding, I reach out to the department heads and ask the department heads what they think they need. So I like to say I'm comfortable with the information that's come from you guys, I'm comfortable with looking at, you know, potential other funding sources.
I mean, I think that if we go back to this, of, of the, of the, uh, presentation you can do with spreadsheet, I think that, I think that what I'm hearing, that kind of is that, where does that give a pain? Right, and I think that's what you're looking for, is that root for, and I think that's a great idea. You know what I mean, those, those are easy things to, to go back, I mean, it seems like that's what I'm hearing is, you know, as fires speak back is, you know, I, I maybe I just, I, I'll use word. How can, where can we move things around, or how can we get, so we need to, we need to go back to something like that, so or can see, okay, if we do. or conceive, okay, if we do this and, you know, this moving part has to, something we've got to move, make this part move, things like that. You know, and, and I, and that's what we need to do. That's, that's absolutely not a problem. I, I think that that's.
We can figure out how to make that happen.
The thing I said, I'm hearing from everybody, kind of points to that, like, like you said, you, you know, maybe it's not me that needs to figure out where it is, but it is the board that has to figure that out. It's not, the budget doesn't belong to staff. The budget belongs to the board. So it was a matter that we need to have it presented us in a way that's visual and we can make informed decisions. And the feedback is going back to the, you know, that spreadsheet format that we have, you know, that we use for many years. I, I think that's, that's a very reasonable request.
So, um, you know, the last thing I'll say is that I feel that, Jesse, you said, I don't know, needs versus wants. And, um, what I take away on that is what are the real needs of this community right now versus the wants? And I think we continue to struggle with the fire department. Um, this fire department helps other communities when they need help. Um, they choose either not to add to their fire department or they're unable to. Um, but I think we need another firefighter paramedic. I think that is part of what we talked about and, you know, since twenty seventeen. There are some different people on the board now. Um, I think we need to make that, to me, is a need. That is necessary. I know that when the fire department, um, met with you, when you talked about things for next year, part of what was on the table was the last pay raise for the volunteers. So that had to be worked in for this year.
As well as the, uh, market rate adjustments for chief and assistant chief.
Right?
Yep.
And, um, and of course with changing, you know, the position for the administrative assistant.
Correct.
Um, so, yeah, to have a carryover from last year is already kind of a, you know, negative because that was decided last year. Some of us did not vote for that. So I did not vote to carry it over. So, you know, here it is that we're having to carry it over. Um, but I do think the need in this community right now is another firefighter paramedic. I, I understand that the DPDW wants another new person. I don't feel that, I mean, I know it's a want. I know there's a lot of things that can be done with that position, but, um, I don't feel that that's warranted right now. Um, I am looking to try to help, have you help us figure out where we can make a firefighter paramedic position, whether we have to wait till May next year to start that person or June or July. I, I would like to see some options.
Uh, th- there are actually multiple options through different communities as far as full-time help being explored. There's also options being explored at the county level, which are in infant stage of discussions. Um, we are one of the few departments that actually have full-time staff available to us, um, which is why I did look to pivot with the executive, uh, budget here to look at other departments and, uh, needs, um, with a growing community. Um, I think it's important to point out too that the carryover, um, was born out of necessity. Um, we, we frankly couldn't afford all of the, um, changes to the pay scales and, and whatnot because of expenditure restraint uh, for twenty twenty-one. So that, that carryover was a necessary evil. Um, that, that's how we ended up breaking it apart over two years. But, um, that said, you know, the executive budget is just that, an executive budget proposal brought forward to review um, in, in staff's opinion. Um, it's presented in this fashion, um, and I think it is, again, that, that, uh, discussion of, um, prioritization.
Well, I just, I mean, I think Lisa's commenting on what I had mentioned on Monday night, and I appreciate that, but we are all speaking for ourselves. That's why I made the statement Monday night that I would like us to see a way to find an additional staff person, only to come back to say, to be told that I have to find out where that money is, where I'm reading there is revenue in that department that they made. I don't know how to make those numbers come up for that, but I know that there's a need for that. We read it in the paper. We're helping every other community. We, I'm telling you what my thoughts are, and that, that came from on Monday night.
Sure. Um, adding, to add a staff member within the fire department, um, i- we could not program fund balance, um, that, that would not be sustainable because the fund balances within this fund. Um, the calls for service, um, are not making up that gap as there is um, still fund balance programmed within the fire protections and, and rescue services special revenue fund. That said, that leaves us with, with the final funding mechanism for the, the fire department being the general property tax levy. Um, for twenty twenty-two, that tax levy is programmed at, um, just south of seven hundred thousand dollars, about six ninety-six, five ninety, to fund a firefighter, uh, paramedic. All in, we're looking at, uh, seventy thousand dollars to start. That is, again, we need to assume family coverage and whatnot. So that is a very significant tax levy allocation.
It wouldn't be us completely funding that though. So the town would have to pay a percent.
Correct, but then in years coming, there is that continual funding and, and we continue to utilize fund balance within the special revenue fund here and, and the calls for service, those revenues aren't, aren't making up the, um, necessary funding even for that cost sharing. We're seeing a trend here of continued use of fund balance within this one small fund. Um, a- and again, there, there are many things in, in play here where we are exploring consolidation models throughout the county. We are having talks with the county about potential changes in, in staffing as well. But again, that's very in the beginning. And I would hate to get too far out in front of that when there are other needs within our organization. Um, again, that's, that's where I'm coming from, but getting back to my original point of funding w- would have to come through that property tax adjustment. And even if it were half, so let's say forty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars, that's still a pretty significant, um, piece of tax levy allocation. And i- i- it, to make up that much tax levy, we're looking at either a capital project or an equipment expenditure or um, uh, some other significant thing, heaven forbid, uh, the COLA, um, or, or other levy allocations to different funds. And, and part of my task and my goal in coming forward is presenting something that is balanced across the entire organization, knowing full well that, that things can change as we go in future years. Um, i- so that said, if the direction of the committee is to come forward and install a, a, um, let, pick, pick a start date, I guess, that, that I'm open to, install a firefighter paramedic into this fund. Um, we, we have to break down what that cost is and, and um, what, what impacts it would have a ripple effect through the remainder of the funds that receive tax levy.
I have another question. Um, you are talking about how you're going to pay for the DPDW person. And one of the things I'm noting is that you're going to try to pay for that in salt savings. And that is definitely not sustainable over the years. So they, you saved a lot of money this year with salt savings.
And we are also looking to utilize that levy carried forward adjustment as well as incoming tax levy with houses coming online.
So, you know, and again, to my point, um, so new construction also would have a, have an effect on the amount of money every year that should be contributed to the fire department under general property taxes. So I know last year we gave them a bump to six ninety-five, five ninety. Um, every year that should go up. Every year that general property taxes, we make more, that should go up, in my opinion, just like, uh, Parkin's and Open Fund. Um, I don't think it's going to be eighty thousand. We also know that Southville is going to pay eight hours of the administrative assistant.
Know that yet.
Well, I think there's that speculation, and I think that's been discussed.
And we don't have a contract in hand. I can't, I can't pro that. The point being, I can't program that into a budget. That, that, that would be completely irresponsible on my part in presenting to the board.
It's, it's, you know, it's not going to be a total of eighty thousand dollars. I mean, I think that's probably, uh, you know, my estimate. Again, my personal opinion is I would like to see you come back with something that shows us how we can do it.
I think that this has to go, it's not a, it's not an administrative decision, I guess. This, you know, I'll, I'll, let's hold the board. Is there, is there interest in having Jesse look at, you know, what funding it would take to fund another EMT? And where, and where he would recommend pulling that money from? Obviously, it has to come from general, it has to come from the levy, has to come from the religious allocation to the fire department because they're already using fund balance to, uh, meet their programming for twenty twenty-two. So we can't take additional fund balance, we're already using fund balance. So it has to come from the general levy. Is there enough want, is there enough desire by the board as a whole to have, to direct Jesse and Paul and say, where in the budget do you want, you want, where in the budget should I cut to fund that position? And is there, was there, do people feel strong enough that we're willing to cut other programs and projects to fund this? And if there is, it's a board decision. It's not, it's not Jesse's decision. So, I mean, you want us to direct Jesse to say, investigate it, give us your best thoughts on where to report from, and bring it back to us at public hearing, and then we can make, and we can act.
Yeah.
Yes.
But we don't, we don't want to tell Jesse to just figure it out. We, we can ask him to say, if there's a direction by the board as a whole to say, this is important. Where, how would you make it happen?
Sure.
Direct that.
Yep.
Is that, is that a consensus of the board?
Yes, yes. I don't have strong enough feelings to say yes at this point.
So, I want to.
Yes.
So we have a majority. So.
Yes.
At public hearing, bring us back what you consider in your professional opinion to be the way.
Can do. I will do that.
May I make a, a comment real quick? And, and Chief, please don't take any disrespect for this, but I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm listening to this conversation going on for the fire department. The chief didn't ask for personnel. I've asked for two people. And my people were put out, but I don't hear the board up here talking about the police department funding a police department who has not had an increase in staff since nineteen ninety-nine. We're dealing with the same amount of people in the police department and building double our population since then, and we have a lot more calls for service. So I just asked that if we're going to talk about personnel, let's talk about adding police personnel to directors who have actually asked for personnel. That's all I want, as long as.
Okay, thank you.
So can I a- answer? Chief kept there? So Chief, I, I guess I'm just looking at the overall picture where we have a department that's basically volunteer. And, and so to me, that, that's a problem. I know that's what you asked for. You have a lot of people working in the police department. And this is a department where there's, um, five full-time firefighter, EMT, paramedic people and one part-time administrative assistant. And every single day, it's an issue with getting people to, to come out and work. So that's the reason that I'm pushing for this now. And before you were here in twenty seventeen, the fire department talked about the importance, this was before really any consolidation, there were any, you know, concrete consolidation talks, talking about, um, what are we going to do? And so there was a, something that was proposed and the public safety committee liked it and, and you know, we, we tried to do something with that. So it is not personal, but, um, this is a department that has only a few full-time people. And they don't get the opportunity to say, no, sorry, we can't go out. So I, I'm, I'm sorry.
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, yeah, can I just get a clarification here too? I heard, um, Lisa said that we have a volunteer department. Are we a volunteer department or are we a paid?
No, we have a part-time wage line for four hundred fifteen thousand for the volunteers.
I think that that's, you know, and I have a great deal of respect in both police and fire department, right? Absolutely do. But I think that, you know, we kind of have that, that misconception out there that we have a volunteer fire department versus a paid part-time department. So I think that's important for, for the record to state.
You have, you're only partially correct. Our, our members volunteer every night. There are a quarter of our members are volunteering for free to be, be available right now.
Thank you.
There's no reverse. So it is, it is probably a modern term, is a combination.
Correct. I, I think the most accurate way to classify the majority of the workforce in the fire department is paid on call, where once they get a call, they're paid. Otherwise, to Chief's point, they volunteer to serve in an on-call status.
No. Do you do an on-call? See if you can give us, um, some clarification on where the county may be leaning.
Sure.
Um, because what I heard is, it doesn't necessarily have to be, doesn't necessarily have to be something. Or just, I mean, it could be something worth the county. And please.
Well, I, I, I'm talking about it from perspective of my community. That's what I'm asking for here.
It could be, we don't know what the program.
I can, I can say this. There was a meeting scheduled for our chancellor.
We have a direction for the administrator, and every, we have a consensus. That's, that's really all we need to do tonight.
I will have that modeled out and presented. Yep.
Any other comments that we want to, or any other questions that weren't answered?
Yes, um, why is the part-time fire person on this energy first, first start in January?
That was the request from the department.
Was it, was it the department?
As part of the budget. Yep.
Cool for next, next year.
I thought they'd be similar to what you did last year for Matt and, uh, Bill, start them in November.
That was a wage adjustment. That wasn't a change in, uh, workers.
Also, uh, I'm really for a firefighter EMT. I understand your issues, um, and I understand that. But sorry, yes, to my heart, the fact that our firefighters and EMT are there to save lives twenty-four hours a day, twenty-six, five days a year. I know we need more staff, but especially during snow season, but that all, it might be six times. So I, my heart is really in having a firefighter EMT.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I mean, mo- most of my comments reflect what other people have said, but uh, I think it is a need for the fire department to get an additional person.
I just kind of asked.
Well, I think I can still comment, can I? Is my entitled to comment? Right? I'd like some comments on it. Whoa. Can you dictate, can you dictate what I can and cannot say?
Move to the conversation. We've already.
Are you trying to censor me and not being able to?
No, I'm trying to ask you. Do you not hear what we?
I heard loud and clear.
Okay, so what do you want to add?
I mean, that's not a way to address a colleague.
You're, 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 you're radioing or you're going after.
I am not going after anybody. I'm saying he, he has a need for another. Okay, Jim, that's unprofessional on your part.
I just don't get it.
That's the way you want to handle it, Frank.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's an ask and answer.
I get the drift. It's very unprofessional.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions that haven't been asked or answered?
Yeah, let's just add, um, everybody is, uh, again, I don't know if anybody is, feels strongly about trying to add money to the Park and Open Space Fund um, and give them more than thirty-five thousand dollars. I don't know if anybody else is interested in that. I, I, and again, Jesse, I, you know, I understand. I feel that there isn't, that's not a lot of money to try to help those other parks.
I, I think similarly, if, if the consensus to give direction, um, very similar to the firefighter EMT discussion we just had, I can model that, look to identify some sources. Um, again, if that's the consensus of, of the board, uh, or committee, the whole, excuse me, um, to, to model that out and present it, that can be done as well.
So I would like that. I would as well.
I would as well. I, same for me.
Excuse me, let me ask for a point of clarification. Is the committee, the whole, is there a specific amount that the committee, the whole is, um, willing to consider? Um, please be mindful of levy allocations and whatnot, but that said, I understand the priority that has been assigned by the committee, the whole, to model this out. Um, that said, I, I need a target as to what, to start my model with.
Well, on Monday night, I suggested ten thousand.
I would go with that.
Yep, ten thousand.
Okay. We will, we will utilize that to. Okay, we will, we will utilize that to base our model and present feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?